Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Donovan School Committee to order for Monday, February 13th, 2017. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Well, good evening, everyone. I would like to apologize for the late start as we got a late finish to our Gidley School recognition. It was a wonderful ceremony. It was actually well-attended, I thought. So, my thanks to all those who came out to help celebrate Gidley School. I just reminded that this meeting is being videotaped by the Dartmouth High School Media Club for a future broadcast on DCTV, as well as our own Dartmouth High School Media YouTube channel. Also, if you have any cell phones, pagers, electronic devices, if you could please silence them at this time, roll call, please.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins. Chris Garth.
President.
Carol Karafotis. Here. John Noon.
Yep. Thank you very much. I would just like to let my colleagues know, as well as the viewing audience, that our my colleague, Dr. Jenkins, could not be with us this evening. She has a prior business meeting she wishes she could attend, but duty does call. At this time, we've allotted 10 minutes for anyone wishing to speak on any of tonight's agenda items. If you would like to speak on any of tonight's items, I ask you to please approach the podium. Good evening, Mrs. Viera. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. God, I'm really small. Is this supposed to like to date us like this?
Got your stepstool if you want.
I got toes. All right. Good evening. My name is Viera. I stand before you as president of Donovan Educators Association, as a teacher at the high school, as well as a parent of two high school students. I know this evening you're going to be speaking on the FY18 budget, and I just wanted to either ask a few questions or just state a few concerns that I may have regarding some issues that we presently have with this year's budget. Not really knowing what the remedy is going to be for some of these issues or what the budget looks like.
So, this year's budget, meaning FY17 or FY18?
FY18. I know what '17 is. I know where we stand, but I don't know what the projections are for '18, so I just have some concerns. At the high school, we have some phys ed classes that the class sizes are extremely large. One of the concerns that we had when we had a retiree last year, she happened to be a female phys ed teacher, so that leaves us with one female phys ed teacher and two male phys ed teachers. I believe one, possibly two and a half. One of them, I believe, does half health decisions and half phys ed, but I may be misspoken there. However, the concern is this: We have a fitness room in which many of our female students like to take phys ed. When they have to take phys ed, they like to take the fitness room as opposed to having open gym. In the open gymnasium, we have a ratio of probably, ooh, four times the number of boys and we have girls on some occasions. And it's an open gymnasium. However, we will typically have only one male phys ed teacher, sometimes monitoring numbers like 49 kids, 58 kids, 53 students and 51. Now, the max assigned per teacher is 50. However, with that in mind, you had two adults typically that would be in the gymnasium, you know, monitoring a number of students, 100 together, as opposed to having only one adult monitoring 59 or 53. I have two sons who have fourth block phys ed, and there are days where, you know, that one phys ed teacher basically says, "This is the activity. Do it or don't participate," because of the high numbers of students. The other issue that we have is, having only one female phys ed teacher, we have a locker room coverage that's an issue, so we have to pull a hall monitor for certain blocks, either the period where she's teaching health and not in the gymnasium, or when she actually has her prep period because we need someone to cover the female locker room in the beginning and the end of class. So, it just, it's a safety issue in the gymnasium. It's a safety concern in the locker room, and if we do believe that phys ed is important, it just, it bothers me as a parent that my sons are in such very, very large classes, and not just them. I just can speak from experience because they happen to be in a very large Block IV class. The other two points I would like to make, if I have a moment, I don't want to run over. Right now, I know last year in the budget, we were looking to add a teacher to the science department. One of the concerns that we have there, and I'm not speaking for myself because I teach biology, but one of the concerns that we have in science is that you have to have a specific license. So, we've got teachers that are licensed in science, but we're, you know, we're trying to cover differences between biology and chemistry classes because our numbers are quite large. Biology is an MCAS course, so, you know, we do our best to make it work, but when we look at lab stations that are set up for like 24 students and we're cramming in 29, 30, and 31 students, it makes it hard to meet all their needs, especially for a course that they need to pass the final exam, but they're also going to get that MCAS test chasing them. And just being able to have enough room to safely have the lab-oriented courses, you know, the way they're designed. So, our bio and our chemistry classes are really quite large. The last thing I wanted to speak about presently has to do with the fact that we've lost some TAs in the district, and salary-wise, teaching assistants, you know, are much less than teacher salaries. However, we've lost quite a few at Quinn Elementary this year, and we know that with our large class sizes, we do have concerns that classroom teachers cannot necessarily meet the needs of all the students. We do have co-teachers at the high school, in which some of them are teaching assistants. So, you know, we try to take up the slack where we have large classes at the high school and we can't have a special ed co-teacher. But, again, just some budgetary concerns. I know that, you know, you're putting your best foot forward, and I respect all the work that Jim does. I just felt it was important just to make some points of some ongoing issues and hoping that we can somehow try to remedy those in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Viera. We'll take that under advisement. Anyone else wishing to speak? At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the regular session minutes of December 12th, and let's take the regular session minutes of January 30th.
So moved.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Noon, second by Dr. Karafotis. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carried unanimously. Next up, if it's okay with the committee, I will lump the executive session minutes for December 12th, as well as the executive session minutes for January 30th.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, with the stipulation that they be held until the matters for which they were intended is completed?
I'll second that.
I have a second. I have a motion by Mr. Noon, second by Dr. Karafotis. On the motion, any further discussion? Chair hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Next up, I'm going to turn it over to our business manager, Mr. James Kiley, for a presentation on the FY18 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Seems like I pick the nights for my presentations and discussions when I have a really tough act to follow. That Gidley presentation was really very nice, very special. So, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about the FY18 budget. We are, at this point in the process, have already worked with the principals, administrators in our buildings. We've also met with the budget subcommittee and have done a lot of work to get to this point, analyzing proposals that are needs-based, and with, I'll show you some of the proposals that we have funded and some of the proposals that we've not been able to fund, and all very good proposals and things that we feel will help kids. So, with that, we'll get started. So, guiding our FY18 budget is our mission: Provide a quality education for all learners. We have some core beliefs that we feel are critical to the development of everything that we do, including this budget process. I'll just briefly outline them. Demonstrating personal and social responsibility. Developing a work ethic of perseverance. Discovering and broadening individual talents. Embracing the knowledge society with current instructional methods and tools. And engaging in open communication with each other and our community. So, strong schools equals strong communities. We debuted this slide last year in our presentation, and it's something that's important to us. Teaching and learning. We have state assessment, our accountability status. We have two Level 1 schools, three Level 2 schools. We have 99.7% highly qualified teaching staff. We have, as you know, very rich program of studies, including rich programs in art, music, theater, journalism, foreign language, technology, PE, health, advanced placement, and others. We have some specialized programs, including our PALS, PASS programs, our integrated pre-K. We have, we're developing more and more STEM programs and looking forward to advancing that part of our operation. We're educating our ELL population. As you know, we provide full-day kindergarten, and we provide a rich, rich professional development opportunities for our staff. Enrichment. We have a broad array of extracurricular programs, including some of our award-winning programs in music, arts, and athletics. We have a nationally recognized school newspaper. We have Dream Far, our high school marathon program. We have extensive extracurricular programming, such as robotics, engineering, math team, drama debate, DECA, Key Club, The Maker Program, literary magazine. We have very active student government. Health and well-being. We have our PBIS and RTI models to support student success. We have our therapeutic and nursing services, speech, language, occupational, social, and emotional. We have community engagement, strong parent-teacher organizations and boosters. I know one of the things that we've talked about in the past and usually comes up is how much money are we raising? Are these folks raising to support our educational program? And I don't think that I have every dollar, but I did a quick calculation, and we were almost $200,000 of funding that's raised by parent groups. And I'm sure I'm missing some, but that was a quick calculation based on what's been presented to the school committee and fundraising requests that you all have approved. So, there's a, there's a strong community commitment, obviously, to supporting our district. And we're working to expand school and community partnerships. Healthy Dartmouth's been very successful, working with UMass. Management and operations. I like to think that we have a very strong maintenance program, and our capital improvement program is something that is critical to us keeping these old buildings operational. And I think on the finance side, where Sound, we work with, I think we work very well with Town Hall, and we have a strong organization. So, there's our accountability status. I think I mentioned, we have our two number, two Level 1 schools, the DeMello School and the Quinn School right now, and three Level 2 schools, Potter Middle and High School. So, our district overall rating is Level 2. Strategic objectives. Teaching and learning. To develop and sustain a vertically and horizontally aligned curriculum, instruction, and assessment system to support growth of all learners. So, when we're looking at the budget, we're thinking about these strategic objectives and trying to align our resources to support them. Access and equity. Strengthen practices and procedures that promote equal access to ensure social and emotional learning. And career, college and career readiness for all, with an emphasis on engagement, high expectations, and shared responsibility. And then, community engagement. To expand partnerships with families and community members to enhance social and emotional learning and academic growth for all learners. So, the reason I'm, you know, I'm giving you all this background information because every decision that we make in the budget process, these are the things that are guiding us to make these decisions. We want to maintain and enrich quality programs and support services. We want to enhance technology infrastructure and equipment. We want to enhance the use of that equipment. We want to maintain reasonable class sizes. Enhance curriculum instruction and assessment. Increase support for all learners. And increase our capacity to address the social and emotional learning needs of our So, what does that mean right now, money-wise, in FY18? So, in FY18, we're proposing a budget of $41,915,606. Instruction represents about 75% of our overall budget at $31,362,383. So, instruction includes things like, you would guess, teachers, principals, teacher assistants, substitutes, other instructional staff, technology, professional development, special ed services, books, supplies, everything that goes on in the classroom. Our next biggest category, which represents 10%, are other services. Those are things, support services like transportation, attendance, health, athletics, and other activities, student activities-related costs. And then, third on the list is maintenance, which, maintenance and utilities, which represent 8%. Things like utilities, custodial services, and maintaining our buildings and grounds. Our administration represents about 3%. That includes our district administration, our technology related to systems, district systems, and legal costs. And then, tuitions. That represents also about 3% of our overall budget, and that includes placement for out-of-district students. So, these expenses and propose, this proposal is pretty consistent with where we were. In fact, none of the percentages changed since last year. The numbers have gotten somewhat bigger, but they have not, as a percentage of the overall budget, have not changed. So, the FY18 proposed budget includes a 2.5% increase in instruction, which is related primarily to salaries and staff. I'll show you a little bit coming up as to what, what we have in store there. Administration is up, is pretty stable, but 0.9% relating to salary increases. Maintenance and utilities, up about 0.8%. Again, pretty consistent with FY17. Other services, up about 2 and 2.4% relating to transportation costs. And tuition's up a little bit, and I can explain that. That's up 12.3%. And we have, we had a little increase in FY17 that's impacting our FY18 costs, so during the FY17 year. So, that's resulting in some, some, an increase there of about $162,000 for next year. So, we have some recommendations we'd like to make. It's not, unfortunately, the long list of great things that we proposed last year, but there are some key components that we wanted to bring forward and that we felt were important to fit into this proposal. We have had much discussion internally and certainly at the school committee level about preschool, and we have proposed a new preschool classroom, be housed at the Potter School. The cost of that classroom net of tuition would be about $105,000 in the FY18 budget, and there would be 2.4 staff relating to that, with a teacher, a teacher assistant, and some speech and occupational therapy that would also be a part of that program. We have also proposed an instructional technology specialist at the middle school. So, we really felt that it was important to build on the success, the great success that we've had at the elementary level. I know the school committees have an opportunity to observe some of the success that we've had since we've added those positions, and we felt like this is the next step. We have an infrastructure in place at the middle school that can support it, and we wanted to move that forward. We've also proposed a reading specialist at the middle school. Again, an area that the middle school has a, has a very defined need that was quite obvious to us, that was something that was a priority. Students that are currently not able to be served, that we, that we certainly wanted to address in this budget. And then, we did have some reductions. One was a teacher assistant at the middle school, and it's relating to a retirement and the way we're going to fill that retirement that we're able to make this, make this reduction. The, the Quinn School, we had some shifting of positions, so we had a teacher assistant position that we did not fill. It's actually not filled currently in FY17, and that's the library teacher assistant position here. And then, we also, we had an opening at the high school, a halftime secretarial position that we did not fill. So, those three reductions, and that's currently not filled in FY17 as well. So, those were the three reductions of staff that we built into the FY18 budget. So, like I think I said earlier, there were a lot of requests, and they were very good requests. There were things that we could do to help kids that we weren't able to build into the FY18 budget. The FY18 budget was pretty restrictive with the amount of money that there is available in the town. So, this list includes some things that actually were, Mrs. Viera already brought up. One thing, the phys ed teacher at the high school. An instructional technology specialist at the high school, which we also support the idea, and we felt like it was important to expand it up to the middle school this year and then hopefully continue the success in the future at the high school level. The middle school, we weren't able to fund a custodian position. That school is a, is a big school, and they made a good case for that, but we weren't able to do that. The Cushman School, they asked for a secretary during the summer. We weren't able to fill that. An expansion of an outreach worker's position, which we were also not able to fill. DeMello School asked for an additional classroom teacher, which we're going to watch very carefully as we, as we continue to register students very soon here. We'll be registering our kindergarten kids. So, we're going to keep an eye on that. A reading specialist, halftime, an outreach social worker, and a library media specialist, halftime. The Potter School asked for a part-time secretary to full-time, and a teacher assistant position, which we actually addressed in a different way, and I'll tell you about that in a moment. Math coach or specialist and/or specialist at Quinn. Some things in athletics, including field maintenance services, strength and conditioning coach, and some increases in the athletics expense budget. Winter percussion and color guard stipends. Special ed behavioral program and a board-certified behavior analyst. And we also took another look at the parents' start of school purchases, which we had looked at before on the school committee's request. So, all of those things that we were not able to fund were $711,786 or an additional 1.7% budget increase. So, our budget right now was at 2.6%, so that would have been an additional 1.7 on top of that, and we felt like, given the economic circumstances in town, we weren't able to incorporate those items. The teacher assistant that was requested at the Potter School with the addition of the preschool, there are some needs that we need to address regarding monitors at the Potter School, so we've incorporated, we've addressed the need through monitors rather than a full-time teacher assistant position, so. So, those are the things that make up this budget. I've provided you and your binders with lots of detail and backup information, which we'll also be posting online on the website for the public to peruse. And from here, we can certainly have discussion tonight. We'll have more discussion at our next school committee meeting, and we'll also have a public hearing coming up. And we're going to, I think, set the date on that tonight as well. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Kiley. Questions, comments from my colleagues? Mr. Garth?
Mr. Kiley, I don't have any questions because I think, I have no doubt I trust the superintendent, you, the members of the budget committee, to do the most you can with the money that we have. My comments are pretty direct. There's not a thing that we're adding to the district that touches all students in the district. Most of the things that were denied were not things that touched all students in the district either. In many cases, they simply maintained what we're doing, and they, you know, were creatively addressing some things. I think Mrs. Viera's comments about the phys ed situation are real and meaningful, and I think we are at the point now where the lack of fiscal support for the schools in the district is starting to cut away at us developing, delivering our core mission and the services that direct that. And we are, at this point, beginning to get by by relying on the goodwill of some of our people to go above and beyond, which I think is commendable, but they do. But programmatically, it is a poor way to design and deliver services. And anyone who, who comes in front of us or goes to the town side and says, "Oh, the schools have all the money they need." Well, if we did, there would be more than four things that we're adding. And the four things that we're adding, as I said, they're not touching the students at the, at the Cushman School, they are not touching the students at the DeMello School, and they are not touching a single student at the high school. Okay? We are doing everything that we did last year, which is, you know, what we did last year, but nothing else is being added. There's no new district-wide initiative. There is no conversation about a one-to-one, you know, computer system or a wholesale transformation of our technology platform, or, you know, wholesale improvements, additions to the building, or creative expressions. Anything that, that might be cutting-edge can't even be considered in this fiscal environment. And so, again, I trust that you've done the most that you can. I don't have any doubts that you looked everywhere to find the money, but it can't continue.
Thank you, Mr. Kiley.
I just have a question right now about the preschool at Potter. Is that going to be an integrated preschool?
Yes. Mr. Noon?
Yeah, again, and I'll go through this as I always do, and I'll sit down. I'm sitting with online with Mr. Kiley. I appreciate everything that they've done, type of deal. I also appreciate, as I said before, the fact that we get, you know, they're not wishes that administrators and directors are asking for, their wants, their needs, type of, type of deal. My concern becomes the fact, as you look at the local aid from the state right now isn't, and this is just the governor, the House hasn't, the Senate hasn't come out with any of theirs or anything of that nature. We're only up $250,000 roughly, townwide, type of deal, you know. State revenues are still in some type of turmoil. They haven't, you know, they haven't recovered. I don't know what's going to happen, and I'm hoping that, you know, they're able to use, the state is able to do some real good creative financing to, to get this thing balanced and at least keep us with these numbers, if not more. But it would be wonderful to, to see some more money come down, to funnel down from the, from the state. the, from the state.
Thanks. Couldn't agree with you more, Mr. Nunes. Thank you. Mr. Kylie, overall, great presentation. I know that you and your staff, as well as central administration and all the other building principals who've spent a lot of time putting your, putting thoughts backed up by data into this budget. And unfortunately, we are at the realization that, you know, I'd love to be able to say we're going to try to fund some more things, but it, it is unfortunate to some extent. Just one of the pieces that I see here that I think would, based on all the, all the talk about social, emotional, is the, are creating an in-house behavioral program, you know, with the BCBA, that, that's a, it's a big piece that I hope in the near future that we're able, able to go after and try to keep that in-house versus sending them out of district. Like Mr. Garth said, a lot of these, a lot of these issues, a lot of these needs are real and I really hope in the near future, in one of the next budget cycles, that we can, we can move on some of these other things that we've seen, especially on the, in the pipeline for several years now. I do appreciate though diligent, being diligent with some of these other pieces that we know work, the instructional technology specialists, we know, we've seen the outcome of that. And especially with moving temp gas two point oh in an all-online environment that that's, you know, if our students are not prepared for that, our test scores are going to show that, one way or the other. So, I don't have anything else. Are we looking at setting a, a date for the budget hearing? Is that what you're asking for?
Yes. So, we have currently, I believe, three meetings scheduled in March. So, it would be up to you whether we want to keep those three or go to two. One of them, the first, either the first or second one, needs to be the budget hearing. If we kept all three, the middle one could be the budget hearing, let's say. But it's not necessary. You can certainly deliberate on the night of, of the budget hearing. That's normal, normally what we would do after the budget hearing. So, it, I think there was some discussion about whether the rest of the agenda on those meetings, whether it made sense to have three, three meetings was probably excessive for March. So, we have the sixth and the thirteenth and then the twenty-seventh. We need the, we need either the thirteenth or the twenty-seventh to actually vote on the budget. And that has to be seven days after the, the hearing.
Right.
So...
On another note, Mr. Kylie, do we typically, don't we typically do the school choice vote on the same night?
We, we do.
Okay.
We usually do the hearing, we have the school choice hearing at the same time, yes.
Because I, at the next meeting, I would like to get a report on the status of school choice, how it went this year, Dr. Gifford, and just so we can make an educated, informed decision moving forward on whether or not to open up that public schools for school choice for FY eighteen.
Just to that, that end, I, you know, I, I know everybody's want to not be here more than twice a month, I get that. But I wonder if it wouldn't be in everyone's best interest to have the hearings for school choice and budget not both be on the same night so that the issues about those matters would get confused. And one, I think, while they both deal with dollars, the budget does not actually deal with those dollars right now. And the conversations that I think we are hearing in the community are perhaps about more tangential issues relative to school choice. And so, there'd be sort of an apple is an orange's reality if we had them both take place, you know, with the same crowd on the same night. That's my only thought on that.
Thank you, Mr. Garth. So, that being said, we need to have the, we need to vote seven days after the hearings. Is, is that correct, Mr. Kylie, seven days after the hearing?
At least seven, yep.
So, are you, are you asking or saying, recommending that we keep all three meetings?
Well, I mean, I, I, no, not necessarily. I, I think if we did, if we kept the sixth and the thirteenth, I know, I guess we couldn't do it that way.
No, not.
Right, because we'd have to, yeah.
Right.
Again.
Any other thoughts, Mr. Nunes?
Yeah. As I look at, as I look at it, I think we need to, the toss-up becomes, I think the twenty-seventh, we keep that meeting. That's the one that we have the school, we have the budget, uh...
The vote?
The vote for the budget, okay?
Yep.
And then either the sixth or the thirteenth be the regular meeting, that type of deal. I mean, we're scheduled, whichever way we play, play with it is fine with me, but either way that we do it, we can still have the vote. We just have to, you know, get it posted and then as to which one we're going to agree on and that will be our hearing night and then go with the twenty-seventh with the vote.
Okay. So, what you're saying is just cut the, cut out one of the meetings?
Cut out one of the meetings. I, I, again, if, to come here, with all due respect, everybody's time is precious and we've got a lot of work to do and everything else, but to come here for an hour versus if we needed an hour and a half or two hours, to do what we need to do is fine. I've got, you know, that type of, I'm just saying, why be dragging people out extra nights if we can compact it all into maybe a little bit longer meeting, but still get everything done?
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any reason why we couldn't talk about school choice on the twenty-seventh?
We can't vote on it that night.
But we can vote on the budget, but then we could talk about school choice.
The, the school choice has to be an April first vote, right?
What's the deadline for the school choice vote?
Is it May?
Okay. Do we know for sure that it's May for, or May?
Yeah. Okay. Well, maybe we do it that way.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
We did it in March last year.
Typically done at the same time. We don't have to, though.
I think, I think that we did it.
Yeah.
To save money and to put the ad in the newspaper at the same time as the budget hearing. So, I, honestly, I think, I think that is the, the rationale, rather than doing a separate ad in the Standard Times.
Can we put two dates on the same ad?
Sure, we could. We could do, yeah.
We can advertise two, two meetings, two hearings on two different dates, right? You know, and, and...
Whatever the committee's pleasure is.
One hearing, one hearing on the sixth or the thirteenth, one hearing on the twenty-seventh.
I think because today's the thirteenth and would be a full, a full month if we wait till the thirteenth, I think we should have a meeting on the sixth.
Great.
I'll bet again.
Okay. So, let's go with keeping the meeting on the sixth.
Yeah.
We can scratch the meeting on the thirteenth.
Yep.
Okay. We will vote on the budget on the twenty-seventh and then also on the twenty-seventh, we can have discussion, presentation on school choice, Dr. Gifford?
Either day, yes.
Okay. So, we're not discussing them both on the same night, the sixth?
Yeah.
So, as long as we can push it back, push back the, the vote on school choice till April, I think that'll work.
Yep. I'm good with that.
So, is everyone, everyone good with that? So, we'll have, the public hearing will be on the sixth.
Yep.
Okay.
For the budget. Does that work?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for that.
And the vote will be the twenty-seventh?
And the vote will be the twenty, twenty-seven, yes.
Yep. That's fine.
Yes.
And then we have a joint meeting, April tenth with the select board and finance, I think, believe it's April tenth.
Yeah, April tenth.
With the select board and finance committee.
That's right.
So, that timeline works, works pretty well.
Good.
Especially consider what's happened at that meeting in the past couple of years.
Thank you, everyone, for that. Next up, I will turn it over to Dr. Gifford. I'm sorry, I'm skipping over our student, our student rep. Stacy, how are you tonight?
I'm good, thank you.
Good. I'm going to turn it over to you for your update.
First, want to say congratulations to the junior varsity hockey team who finished their season undefeated and won the championship game this weekend. And also, the varsity team beat a ponituit and they're going to be going to the state tournament now. So, congratulations to them. Many of the winter sports are having their senior nights, so they're ending their regular seasons and heading into playoffs. So, just want to wish the seniors the best of luck. The annual pops concert is on March second. This will be a fundraiser for the DSMA and it'll showcase the orchestra, the band, the chorus and the a cappella group. There'll be refreshments there available for purchase to add more to the fundraising efforts. Also, the Dartmouth High Theater Company is doing a performance competition piece. They'll be presenting it to the school on March third at seven o'clock, but they'll also be competing against other theater companies across the state on the fourth in Born at the Massachusetts Theater Guilds. So, I want to wish them the best of luck. Their show is called The One Hundred Tenth Street Station. Uh, the last thing is, the Dartmouth High School has traditionally had like the college acceptance board up in the lobby. I'm sure you've all seen them. So, there was like some controversy this year and the administration was trying to get rid of the college acceptance board. But after working it out with them and students appealing to this, we made a compromise to put the college acceptance board inside the guidance room. So, it'll be more of like, conducive to like a work environment. So, instead of having it in the front, it'll be in the guidance office, so. I, I mean, that's what the compromise was, but a lot of students are still not too happy about it.
Okay.
Yeah. The, like, the purpose behind it was so that students didn't get too competitive or too stressed out about the college process. But, yeah.
Okay. And this was brought up from the, from the staff at the high school?
Yeah, we were told about it in January.
Okay.
Yeah, so, we're kind of still working on it. Some students are trying to keep changing it because, I don't know, less students are going to be able to see their accomplishments.
Sure. I guess I can understand both sides.
Yeah.
I'm glad to see that you're trying to work out a resolution, though.
Yeah.
Gold, give and take.
Yeah.
Mr. Garth?
Just clarification, because I, I've seen the board, but I don't remember. The board is the names of the schools that people have gotten into or the copies of the letters that they've received?
Yeah, so, what, what we do is, you'll hand in your acceptance letter, they'll black out the address and all your personal information and then they'll put a little strip that says your name on it. So, everyone who's passing by can look at your name and see what schools you got and accepted into. And like the main reason that students were upset was because I'm a lot of underclassmen look at the letters and say, "Oh, my gosh, do you apply to that school? Can you give me tips on applying to that school?" Or students just wanted to celebrate their academic accomplishments for students that don't play sports or don't get the attention for like their band competition or anything like that, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Lot going on at the high school. Good stuff. Thank you, Stacy.
Stacy.
Now, I will turn it over to Dr. Gifford under new business, two thousand sixteen annual report.
Right, you received that.
I did.
As Joan said, for your reading pleasure. And next, you also have received the draft calendar. So, if you'll be able to take a look at that and have discussion on that before we vote on that for next time. Probably need a little time to process it, I guess, and look at the vacation times, the dates and all of that.
Anything that is considerably different? Any different rationale with this calendar versus previous years?
Nothing, nothing really out of the ordinary.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm Mr. Garth.
I will, I will ask my usual question at this time, perhaps, perhaps there is a ray of light.
Pretty used to that.
There is a ray of light. I noticed that once again, we are including the Good Friday holiday, but we are not including any other religious holidays for other denominations. I also note that this year, the Jewish calendar requires only one school day to celebrate, I believe it's Yom Kippur. Rosh Hashanah, I think, this year, it is a Friday, Saturday thing and so I think there's only one day. Would it be possible to start the September calendar on Monday, the twenty-eighth and take Friday, the twenty-second of September off?
Start the twenty-eighth, Friday, twenty-second.
All right. So, you want to take Friday, the twenty-second off?
This Friday.
And what do you want to replace it?
September twenty-second?
Yes.
Is that what you're speaking about?
And what is this for, Mr. Garth?
Uh, maybe just get, this would be... Rosh Hashanah.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to, you know, area schools and I, I understand, I, I agree that, you know, we should acknowledge all religious holidays, but that being said, I'd be curious as to what, I don't know, did we ever get feedback, Dr. Gifford? I don't know if this was during your time on survey of other area school districts and the holidays that they give off.
Not with me and specifically not Rosh Hashanah, but I know in just a previous district, we had done surveys and for the Good Friday piece and most were still taking the Good, for, for reasons you, you know about, you know, the absenteeism and so. It was the norm.
There are engines...
There were some that don't.
Right. There are engines that drive the Good Friday decision.
Mm-hmm.
But the fact is, once that decision's made, it now presents an equity issue for students of different faiths. And I, I, I think, you know, I don't think we're going to ever resolve the Good Friday thing in a, in a, in a slightly easy way. What I'm suggesting is we start on a Monday, you know, with the, the teachers coming back on the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth. Students get three days of school that week and then the trade-off is that you take the Friday, the twenty-second off.
Dr. Kar, Dr. Karafodis?
I have a problem starting that, Mr. Garth, only because, once we do it for one holiday, we're going to be asked to do it for other holidays.
One more, that's it, just two.
I know, but that's what you're saying now, but there are other groups that will come up and want, have their days recognized. I would prefer to see, if we had to do anything, I'd prefer to do away with Good Friday as a day off. Not that I'm suggesting it, but then to start adding other days for religious holidays. And it works out well this coming year because it's on a Friday, but the coming days after that, Rosh Hashanah won't be on the weekend.
I, I'm not aware that there are other religions that have the expectations of behaviors on them that these two holidays do. For example, the holidays that are in the Muslim calendar expects students to go through their normal activities and that's an important part of the faith. This is a, a unique set of circumstances. And so, I understand your, your concern, the slippery slope argument, it makes sense. I'm just not sure that it applies fully in this case.
Mr. Nunes?
Well, I mean, I know we've talked about this before and I think what, you know, years ago, we talked about it and I think there was always an expectation and a reminder that would be sent out to staff to, you know, because of these holidays to, you know, make sure, make, make sure that there is not, you know, there's no, you know, if at all possible to avoid, you know, major tests and things of that nature at that time so that these students aren't affected, they're not trying to make up. The other thing that comes, that comes into play and forget, uh, school vacations and things of, of that nature, but what does this, and I don't have an answer, that's why I'm asking the question, but what does this do with, you know, that's Friday night, we've got a football game, you know, do we have soccer games and field hockey games that day? You know, are you expecting these students not to be able to participate in these, these games? I, I don't know. I'm asking that question, what, what the ramifications would be. But, I mean, personally, I would just, I would, personally would just leave, you know, Good Friday as is and, you know, our Jewish brethren know, you know, what they have to do and I respect, I respect that.
I do believe there is a policy that, is there, regarding the Jewish holidays or, or about holidays, religious holidays on the calendar that we don't, we do have school, that it's understood that the student is absent, they won't, it won't, it'll be an excuse, it'll be an excuse, absent and the teacher cannot give any tests or anything.
That's true.
But the policy regarding opening a school is Tuesday, Wednesday for staff and Thursday, Friday for students. We would have to amend that.
We had that, we had that big discussion last year.
Right, and if I recall, and I'll, I have to check with Ms. Boucher, if I recall, when we did this last year, we saw this in the policy, which of course is your policy and you can certainly change that. Didn't we find another memo that had been released or a different policy that said something different?
Yes.
If I recall?
Yes, yes.
And we didn't come back to address it. So, whether you wanted to shift the policy and take those words out so that you have the option of doing something like you're talking about this time.
Yeah.
Your policy.
The policy subcommittee should look, look at that.
My only comment to the policy is because we take Good Friday off, this is a policy that only affects students who would need to take these two holidays off in a given year.
Yeah.
So, it's not a policy that affects all.
You know, I'm under the mindset that, I agree with Dr. Karafodis, that I'm Catholic. I would be okay with, with doing away with Good Friday, but... I would be okay with, with doing away with Good Friday, but I think at this point, it's ingrained in tradition and in the calendar, and I certainly, not under my tenure on school committee, want to open up that can of worms.
Nor do I.
Nor do I.
So, that being said, uh, we don't, you don't need to vote on this tonight, this is just discussion, right?
No, this is just discussion.
Anything else?
No.
Uh, anything else in regards to the annual report? I hope everyone had a chance to take a look at it.
Took a look at it. Nice.
They'll go in the, uh, the town's annual report. Nice job to, uh, Dr. Gifford, putting the annual report...
Oh, really? Ms. Boucher did that.
Ms. Boucher.
Nagging everyone, "Get it done, get it done," so.
Well, give her our regards and thanks. So, uh, we can, uh, finish up any discussion at the next meeting, and we'll take a vote on the school...
Calendar.
Calendar. We can't take a vote this evening, though, on approval of the annual report, correct?
So moved.
Second. Uh, motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Mr. Garth. On the motion, any discussion? Chair, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you. Uh, next up, superintendent's update.
Okay, thank you. A couple of things I wanted to mention, as you might know, we had early, early release, other than the snow days of all of that, but we had a real early release last week. And, um, I was able to get around to all of the high school sessions and check in on, on them, and I just want to say once again that we're very fortunate that most of our sessions are run by our own staff. So it's, it's really great to see them running. We had, um, SCI class take, being taken, um, by some folks. Of course, technology and social, emotional, and, um, with our special needs, um, teachers running another session. So we're very pleased, because it's nice to have our own staff doing those. And I know a lot of other sessions went on in the rest of the district, but I was able to get to the high school and check in there. Mentioning again, another shout-out for our iSTEM clubs. I came over to Quinn last Wednesday, and little K-2 groups and the 3-5, it's, it's really tremendous work to see the teachers working with this, the kids just love it. And matter of fact, Audrey Thomas here at Quinn, her daughter was in one, and she said every Wednesday, she just jumps out of bed and says, "It's, it's iSTEM day," you know, they, so we're, we're hoping for parents' sake, we can run more, because the kids are so excited to get to school. It's been such a good, a big hit, so that's good to see. We also had kindness challenge running through the district last week, and there were many rallies and things going on about that, helping kids remember to be kind to each other and that kind of thing. I want to give a big shout-out, of course, to our custodians and maintenance and everybody else that was really, really busy trying to get our schools and ready for, um, readmittance and get the snow out of our way and the ice and whatnot. People don't really realize, as we're sitting home nice and cozy, how much work they do, so we really appreciate that. And last, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the pre-K that we're proposing for Potter, because we have been meeting a few times with Ms. Brooks and Melissa as well, from Cushman, um, all of us meeting, really trying to sort out some of the details. It's one thing to just say you're going to have a class, an added class, or, there are a lot of details to think about, one of which is the no room really at Potter School. So you talk about before, about what can we do fiscally and, and where we're going, um, it's, you know, the administration at, at Potter is really stretching to try to find room, really conducive to a good pre-K classroom. Never mind the strain on any of the staffing that you have, you know, we have to add the extra therapists like the SLP and the OT, et cetera, to make sure there's enough support. So it's, it's one thing to add a class, but it's also another to fund it appropriately as well as find the appropriate space. So just something we need to think about long-term.
The same problem exists at Cushman right now as well.
Absolutely, Cushman's just burgeoning as well, you know. We, we walk through and try to look for every little cubby hole we can. If there's a, a landing, it's, can you put us desk there with something, you know, kind of thing? So, yeah, the, the buildings are being stretched to max.
So to that point, Dr. Gifford, obviously, I've been a huge proponent of PK in the North End. And one of the things that I wouldn't want to see done is, a class, you know, if, if we're tight on space at Potter, I would hate to see, I'm sure we're going to be stealing from Peter to pay Paul with space, whether it's a, um, a specialist classroom or a pull-out classroom. You know, I, I would hate to do that, just to establish a program there. I know, even if it was not at Potter, I know there's probably some room over here at Quinn, you know, I, I would hope that the administration would also take a look at that option, because I, I think, personally, I wouldn't feel comfortable with, you know, just have, uprooting a teacher for the sake of putting in a program.
Right, right, right. Yeah, we, we're looking at all the angles, all the options, but I think, um, really long-term, and we'll be working on the master plan this summer, is there something we can do long-term, some kind of addition or renovation, et cetera?
I can't wait to start working on that.
Yeah, so, you know, we, we think we're okay temporarily, but certainly long-term, we, we really need to take a look at that.
Agreed. Just one more question. I, I hear a sense of, of concern as we start the registration for kindergarten in the next month. The potential could be that we're having a serious conversation about where we're going to put something, and this vein is already there, right?
Um, I'm sorry, the...
The potential is already sort of there?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yes. So that's it, that's, that's my problem.
Thank you, Dr. Gifford.
You're welcome.
Uh, I do not have anything on the report of the chair. Does any of my colleagues have something? Mr. Nunes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. The Saturday of, uh, School Vacation Week is our annual Home Indoor Show, starting at noon time with Color Guard, and then somewhere around 4:30 with the percussion units that'll go till 9:30 or so. We've got some 40-plus units, uh, throughout New England that will be there. It's our Nezba Home Show. We get into March, and that's music in our school month, and Stacy was kind enough to talk about our upcoming Pops concert on March 2nd. And one of the things we do every year is, you know, we try to pick an honoree for that to honor at, at the concert. And this year, I'm very pleased to let the committee and everyone know that the honoree is going to be our, though she's not here tonight, our wonderful Secretary Joam. So she's going to be honored at the Pops concert that night.
It's wonderful.
So, looking forward to it.
Well deserved.
Very, very much deserved, so.
What's the date?
March 2nd.
No, not that of the, um...
The home show?
Yes.
The 25th.
That's Greek Independence Day.
There you go.
Mr. Garth?
I, I would like to commend you and, and the superintendent and, and the town for that very thoughtful presentation tonight about the Gidley School.
It was nice.
I thought, you know, um, in a lot of ways, it was an opportunity that families did not have 12 years ago when the, when the school was, was closed. And I think you see just how important it is. As, as I was listening and thinking about it, I, I found, uh, some really interesting things about, you know, uh, Gidley. At one time, it was the biggest school in the district, and then when it closed, it was the smallest school. It, it opened in an era where Babe Ruth was playing. It closed in an era with David Ortiz. And along the way, there was probably a few kids who thought Jackie Robinson was their favorite player. It taught kids in the Depression, through World War II, uh, through the civil rights turbulency of the 50s and the 60s, and the Challenger exploded in, in front of some kids' faces. 9/11 happened while they were in school. It's the only building in the district that can say that it had to deliver that kind of a thing, because it was there so long and it touched each of those things. It probably taught the first generation of females to vote in the town, uh, when you think of, uh, the, as the Constitution changed and things like that. And so I, I think there's a whole lot to that building that was really, really, really special. And it's, it, more than just the, the great teaching that you heard tonight and the great personalities, the, the idea of its role in the town is, is pretty astounding to me. It's the only elementary school that doesn't have a bomb shelter in it, because when they built it, they didn't think they needed one.
Thank you, Mr. Garth.
Does Potter have a bomb shelter?
Sure does.
I didn't even know that.
I've got photos.
Where? Uh, I just wanted to know, the video presentation was excellent. People are asking, "Is that going to be on DCTV or the YouTube?"
Yes, uh, so, the video presentation will be part of the, the whole evening was televised, will, will be televised. That video presentation will be part of the broadcast, and I'm sure that if anyone's interested, they can contact DCTV for a copy, a DVD, and they'll be happy to...
Great, thank you.
I won't offer them, you're welcome. It'll be on You, it'll, it'll be on YouTube as well.
Beautiful.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, uh, well, our next meeting is scheduled for March 6th, 2017, after February Vacation. I hope everyone has a wonderful February vacation.
And safe.
If you're going somewhere. At this time, I'd like to make a, like to entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with union and non-union personnel not to reconvene.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Mr. Garth. On the motion, any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Christopher Oliver?
Yes.
Carol Karafodus?
Yes.
Christopher Garth?
Yes.
John Nunes?
Yes.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. Have a great night, everyone.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day.